Ten degrees.
Uh.
So, uh.
Recording in progress.
Oh, anyway.
Evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Uh, we can hear you, Mr. Chairman. If we could have everyone in the room, please be quiet.
Everyone could just quiet down. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
We've reached six o'clock. Everybody, you ready to go?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. Today's date is April 10th, 2025. My name is Sean Igoe. I'm the chairman of this board. We have three petitions on our agenda tonight. The first petition is 5169 Spinners Inn, South Yarmouth LLC. Are they present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, please ca-- okay, just let me read this. LLC doing business is Parker's River Resort. Property is located at 759 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. It's in a B2 zoning district as well as HMOD 1. The applicant seeks a special permit per 405.5.2 and 405.5.3 to create seasonal employee housing at an existing motel. Attorney Kilroy is representing. Can I have each of you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Attorney Kilroy?
Doc Koenig.
All right, good evening. Could you proceed and tell us, uh, I mean, we are familiar with what you've been doing, but, uh, please proceed and tell us what you've done.
All right, uh, as, as set forth in the application, uh, we're actually continuing what has been operated, uh, how the, the property's been operated the last three years. That is, uh, seasonal employee housing in all 24 units. Um, there was one, um, matter that I brought up in a, that I sent in a memorandum, um, that, uh, we discovered that--
The microphone close up. Can't hear you.
How do we do it? Is it on?
I can hear you, Attorney Kilroy.
Okay. We discovered that, uh, uh, the applicant was having trouble finding, um, seasonal employees, uh, that were operating, uh, in Yarmouth. And it came up that, uh, Chatham Bars Inn had a, had a specific need for that, and that was why we, uh, added this, this memorandum asking for a waiver of the, uh, seasonal employee, uh, requirement in, uh, section 405. Mr. Koenig is, is here. He's, uh, I'd like him to, uh, give you an idea of how he wants to operate this, and, uh, then we can take some questions.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for, uh, allowing me to be here, and I'm amazed that I could draw such a crowd to come about the Parker's River Resort.
You're very popular.
Yes, yes, I'm very popular. So, first, I just want to say a, a little bit about myself. So, uh, I currently live in Swansea, Massachusetts. I grew up, was born outside of, uh, outside of Boston, and spent most of my life, believe it or not, in Orlando, Florida, and somehow I managed to come back up here about 15 years ago. I currently manage the Hilton Boston Back Bay, a 400-room full-service resort in downtown Boston by Fenway Park and, and the, uh, Back Bay area. I've been in the hotel industry for 40 years now, uh, owning my own property and doing something on my own for myself versus having to report to people that I don't really care for is really what my mission has been, and, and I've been looking at properties the last couple of years with Chuck Harry and, uh, reaching out to him when something pops up, and this one really hit me, um, just because of the location, because it's in Yarmouth. And, uh, 40 some odd years ago, 50 years ago, when I first started vacationing in the Cape with my family, Yarmouth and the Blue Water Resort where we used to stay. So, it's kind of, uh, interesting that all falls back to this area. Uh, I've had a, a lifelong goal of owning a motel on my own, and, and here we are today. So, um, with this property, one of the things that was very attractive to me, not outside of the location, is the opportunity has to be enhanced. The property has been run, uh, very successfully by, uh, Patrick and his family for, as you know, the last 17 years. He's a great guy. Honored to have the opportunity to work with him and purchase this property from him, and at the same time, I'm just ready to take it to the next level. It's a motel. It looks fine from the road, but I want it to look better than fine. I want it to have a different customer that's coming into that property. I want to cater adults only. Um, I want to have every room with a king-size bed, sofa mattresses, and go from a motel to a premium, uh, a premium inn. And with that comes a lot of renovations between new roof, new siding, uh, completely renovating all the interior of the rooms, the landscaping. So, I'm sinking a pretty big dollar into the property, which at the same time, uh, will provide some opportunities for those in the local area to do some work at the property, uh, as I go through renovations. Now, one of the challenges I have is that acquiring this hotel just as we hit season, I don't have the opportunity to create the website because it's been employee housing for the past three or four years. So, I've got to develop a website. I've got to get marketing done. I've got to get renovations done. At the same time, I've got a mortgage. I've got utilities. I got, I have bills. So, I've been trying to locate somebody to come in for employee housing, and, uh, through a couple of friends and other people, Chatham Bars came up in their desire to have employee housing. The nice part for me is it carries me through the season until the fall comes, when I can start to actually go ahead and get most of the renovations done of the property. So, by April, March or April, hopefully by March of next year, I'll have that up and running as a, as a full premium, uh, premium inn.
Okay. Um, I have a question. Uh, now, this is 100% occupancy by employees, correct?
Yes.
That's your purpose for this season?
Yeah.
And, uh, generally in the past, we, you, the owner has worked with the Red Jacket Resorts--
Yeah.
--and it's been all of their employees.
Yeah.
You're suggesting now that some of them are going to be from Chatham Bars Inn?
Yeah, so I reached out to Holly, who's the general manager of Red Jacket Resorts, to see if she had that need, but she already had secured housing somewhere else. I'm not exactly sure where, uh, but there wasn't a need for employee housing this year for us.
So, you're getting no employee housing at all from Red Jacket?
Uh, none. There was at one point where she potentially needed one room, uh, but that's gone on the wayside. And to be honest, I prefer it to be one, one business that I'm doing business with, just so I have one point of contact to go to should have, uh, should there be a need to, to reach out to anybody. Makes it easier for me.
Did you solicit anyone else to, uh, in town, any businesses, to occupy those rooms?
Yes. Yeah, and I talked to a couple of other general managers in the area just to see, and the only, uh, uh, individuals that were looking at this-- for rooms at this time were outside of Yarmouth. There was a lot of Dennis, uh, businesses that needed, uh, rooms in the marketplace.
Well, you do understand the purpose and intent of this bylaw is to provide employee housing for Yarmouth businesses, correct?
Yes, sir. I understand.
And we, as a general rule, we don't allow more than 15%. There was an exception made for this property to go to 100% because it was such a need from the Red Jacket Resorts. They had no place to put their people, so it, it kind of worked. You coming in and telling me that you're going to bring people in from Chatham Bars Inn, um, you know, it, it's really not in keeping with the purpose and intent of this section of the bylaw. Now, when did you find out that the Red Jacket wasn't going to be interested in coming back?
Uh, within the last eight weeks.
When did you purchase the property?
Purchase and sale agreement was done six weeks ago, seven weeks ago.
Did you know that the Red Jacket wasn't going to be coming in before you bought it?
Uh, no, I did not. I knew there was no contract agreed to with Red Jacket, uh, because Patrick was interested in selling the hotel, so he did not, uh, did not discuss a contract with them.
Okay. Uh, when are these people going to be moving in?
Uh, somewhere around the second week of May. I don't have the definitive date, but somewhere between the 10th and the 15th of May.
And which businesses did you solicit other than the Red Jacket in town to see if they needed employee housing?
I spoke to two other general-- I don't know people in this market, so let me start there. So, this is new to me. Coming and doing business in the town of Yarmouth is new to me. So, I reached out to, uh, somebody that I met through an acquaintance who had mentioned that there was a possibility of, I don't remember the gentleman's name, that owns the water park down the road. Then in the past, he had looked for rooms.
Joe Marama, yeah. You talked to him?
So, uh, he bought, apparently, allegedly, what I'm told is he bought a motel or he bought a hotel--
Yeah, he did.
--where his housing--
On West Yarmouth, yeah. He's got the same arrangement that you do. Okay, so he doesn't need anybody?
No, he doesn't need anybody. And then I asked, uh, another acquaintance if there's anybody else that he knew, and he made a lot of calls, including he called Red Jacket, even though I already had spoken to Holly, to see if she had any needs, and there wasn't any needs that she had. He said, "Listen, I've got four or five different businesses. I've got Cuffees out in Dennis that's looking to, uh, house employees. They only need five or six rooms. I've got this restaurant that needs two, or I've got this restaurant that needs three." But it was a, a smattering from different businesses in the area, and that, and again, they weren't in Yarmouth. Not that I don't run from Yarmouth. It would be ideal if I did. It's better for everybody if we did.
And so, uh, how many are you renting? So, you, can you fill all of the rooms with Chatham Bars Inn people?
Yes. Two people per room as well, which is nice.
And, uh, how are they going to travel to and from Chatham Bars Inn? Do they all have their own cars?
No, so they will have shuttles that'll come, drop them off, and pick them up from Chatham Bars Inn. So, they'll be working different shifts. Some of them obviously will be working, you know, 7:00 to 3:30 shifts. Some will be working 3:00 to 11:30. Some of them will be room attendants, working in housekeeping. Some will be front desk agents, and a lot of them, I guess, will probably be food and beverage employees, which have swing shifts.
And, uh, so your, your long-term intent, though, is to turn this into a, back into a, a hotel style? Just a motel hotel?
Yeah, it's turning into really, and I say, a, a premium inn, and that's truly what I mean. It's, it's, it's putting a significant amount of money into the property to, you know, one is, you know, to go mini-split units for energy efficiency. Two, it is redo all the insulation, and I partnered with MassSave in order to get some of these rebates, um, to get some of this work done, and, and again, it's just to get it to a premium inn. And, uh, yeah, uh, I, I'll have an issue if I don't have this ready to be a, an inn by April of next year. I'll put that on myself, but, uh, it, it will be. It'll be ready.
So, this would be the last year that you would be providing employee housing. You wouldn't need to come back and ask us again next year?
That's correct. I won't need to come back and ask you. This just gets me through the season so I can pay the bills.
I, I'm just curious. Do you know where the Red Jacket's putting their employees?
I don't. I didn't ask. Um, but no, I do not. I was just told that they secured from, again, from the GM.
Okay. The, the reason I ask is this, that seemed to be a great arrangement for them, being right down on South Shore Drive, having the hotels, and then, you know, your place providing, uh, or the former owner's place. Uh, okay, I'm going to go to the board for some questions. Uh, Jay, do you have any questions?
Uh, just, when this application was done, it's listed as, um, the prospective buyer is making the application, so that's, that's you, correct? This is, so this was made before you actually owned the property? Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Well, that was March 13th, so it's, uh, almost four weeks ago. I mean, I think Sean asked all the questions. I mean, I have concerns. The only time we've ever exposed, have approved this in the past has been for housing Yarmouth, the employees, to support Yarmouth businesses. So, um, I understand what you're going to do, and you want to, you want to be able to pay the bills short term, but I have to think about that, and bringing people in from Yarm-- from Chatham is a, is a long haul, so, um, but I don't have any questions.
Dick, do you have any questions?
Uh, not really. I guess, uh, I'd have a little trouble turning this down, especially if it's just for one year. Considering what we've done before, I don't know that the, uh, the fact that it's a Chatham business as opposed to a Yarmouth business is that, uh, uh, that bigger deal. So, uh, yeah, i- is the manager's unit, is that going to have a manager in it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm going to be at the property quite frequently myself as well.
Okay, so they'll be there to deal with any problems that could, could result?
Yes.
Uh, I wouldn't have any other questions beyond that.
Okay. John, do you have any questions?
I don't have any additional questions. Everything has been asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay. Barbara, do you have any questions?
Um, how are they going to be transported back and forth?
Shuttles, so--
Shuttle, like small, little shuttle buses?
Yeah, I think like vans, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
But other than that, they, they're not going to have their own vehicles?
No, my parking lot will sit empty, other than I'd call them, I'd bring them some bicycles from my house so that they can--
That's all, thanks.
Okay. And you've gone over all the regulations as far as what you require of the employees?
Yes.
They're aware of what their requirements are, limitations, restrictions?
Yeah, and I've got, actually, Patrick was nice enough to leave me the, the details that he put out, set forth for, uh, Red Jacket Resorts and the rules and regulations that are typed out, so I'm going to be using the same ones.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, I just appreciate it, and I appreciate your consideration. Like I said, uh, you know, my goal is to get this renovated, so it's a, it's a property that the town can be proud of, that visibly coming down Route 28. Uh, again, it doesn't look bad today, but it'll look great when it's done, and with that comes tax revenue and people spending in town, and, you know, I, I don't want employee housing, you know. I manage a hotel, and I've been the general manager, managing director for 34 years. Last thing I want to do is buy a motel and house employees in the, for the long term. So, again, it is just a short term, just for the season, just to get me by until I can get renovations going. So, I truly appreciate your consideration.
Okay, all right. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm in the audience, uh, remotely.
Hold on a sec.
It's not like he didn't reach out to any Yarmouth businesses. He did. He's going to be putting revenue into our town. Let him have it for one season so he can pay the bills, so he can build the ho-- fix the hotel up. Let him have it. Come on, Yarmouth, let him have it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
I can, yes. Please identify yourself.
Yeah, Joe Glenn, 822 Route 28. So, this is a, a new neighbor of mine. Um, I just want to endorse it and support it, um, as was just previously stated. They, um, they, they are a business. I know you wanted to support other businesses, um, and help other businesses. Uh, he seems to be, uh, on the up and up and acting in good faith. Um, so I would, uh, support it 100% because he is another business that we're trying to help out, and, and that section of 28 is, uh, you know, going through a lot of, uh, problems, and the other businesses in that area, uh, have been hurt. So, um, anything we can do to support businesses of any sort, uh, we need to do it. So, I support it 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Anyone else? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none. Okay, we're going to close the, uh, we're going to close it to, for public discussion and begin, uh, board deliberation. Anybody want to begin a discussion, or is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I have one, one other question.
Sure, go ahead, Barbara.
Um, when are the, when are you going to start these renovations? How's that going to work if you've got people there in the summer?
So, I'm, I'm hoping that I can get some of the external work done this year. Um, obviously, I want to have least impact to the employees that are going to be staying there, too. So, uh, the roofing, I'm trying to work with, uh, Chatham Bars Inn, and I spoke to them about this, and trying to get that done rather quickly. Uh, that's the first part on the motel rooms, and then on the exterior, there's some landscaping work that has to be done, so I wanted to get that done as well. And then as far as the rest of it goes with the siding, uh, the back of the building's got probably three layers of siding, uh, that needs to be pulled off. So, we'll get the back of the building done during the summer, and then as we go into the fall, we'll do the front of the building. So, I'm going to replace all the windows, um, all the doors. It's going to have all new RFID electronic locks that go into it, so people can do digital remote check-in. Um, and then the interior of the rooms, the flooring, the furniture, the mattresses, et cetera, and the bathrooms will all be done, October, November, or November, December, January, February.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I just have one other question. Uh, you have a written contract with Chatham Bars Inn?
I do.
Okay. And does that written contract cover all of the units?
It covers all the units, yeah. I actually am using almost an identical contract to what Patrick had with Red Jacket.
Okay.
It's not physically signed at this point. It's just pending the outcome from--
Okay, all right. Okay, very good. Okay, back to the board. Um--
So, Sean, I, this is Jay. I mean--
Go ahead, Jay.
I understand he needs to make the investment, and hopefully that would actually improve the property. Um, we've only done this in the past really to support Yarmouth, uh, Yarmouth businesses and, and the need that they had for housing, the need that they had for, um, for, uh, for support, so... But given that he's got only one year, I would say one year would be reasonable, but beyond that, I think we should, um, just limit it at one year.
Well, the special permit's only good for one year. Okay. Um, Dick, your thoughts?
Nothing beyond what Jay just said. Uh, the one-year limitation, of course, makes sense. And, uh, I know we had lots of restrictions in there before as to how to deal with problems should they result. And with the, being a manager, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable with it and look forward to further improvements you'll make next year or later this year.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I don't have anything additional to add. Just that, uh, just to be sure, this is April 1st through October 31st, correct? You're aware of that, the seven-month season?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add, Sean.
Okay, and Barbara?
No, nothing else.
Okay, all right.
So, Sean--
Well, it, it is a little bit out of the ordinary. Um, again, the purpose and intent of the bylaw is to provide employee housing for Yarmouth residents. However, uh, I'm, I'm actually a little surprised that the Red Jacket didn't come back. I thought that that's what we were going to hear because we've heard that in the past. So, I think this gentleman may have been a little bit caught off guard that he didn't have that bigger demand for Yarmouth businesses seeking employee housing. It is only for one year. Uh, certainly, the Chatham Bars Inn is a very reputable business, and I'm sure their employees, uh, are going to conduct themselves as we expect them to. I would suggest that, and, and it, it certainly would be a hardship to this petitioner if we denied him the inability to, uh, to do this, because then he's scrambling, and then he may not have these in shape to rent them out as motel rooms, so, and it's only for one year, and he is going to be a new Yarmouth business. So, even though we're bringing people in from Chatham Bars Inn, we're certainly supporting a Yarmouth business, so I can support it as well. I would suggest that any, uh, approval be subject to the same conditions that we put on with the Red Jacket. So, whatever any conditions we had in the previous order be incorporated into, uh, this, uh, decision as well.
So, Sean, I'd, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for one year and with the same provisions that were in the previous, uh, previous, um, petitions.
Oh, in previous decisions?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
A second. I got it. Second, Sean.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously. Uh, as your aware attorney, uh, counselor, um, Attorney Kilroy, uh, there's a 20-day appeal period that must lapse after that, once the decision is clocked with the town clerk. 20 days must elapse, then you can get your special permit. Please take it and record it at the possible registry of deeds and return a copy to our board. Do you have any questions?
None.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time, and we wish you very good luck with your business.
Attorney Kilroy, will you be drafting the decision? You need a draft from us. Will you be drafting the decision, or do you need a draft? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for choosing Yarmouth.
Okay, the next petition is petition 5170 Be Owlsom Ja-- day, let me try that one again. Be Owlsom Childcare, Inc. Property location at 785 Route 28, Unit 9. It's in a B2 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit as required per decision 4485 and/or variance from decision 4485 and/or to modify decision 4485 dated October 31st, 2014 for P7A use to allow a family daycare for up to six children. The applicant also requests a waiver from the requirement of a certified site plot plan less than two years old. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Uh, my name is Andrea Paiva, and this is my husband, Douglas Casa.
Hi, how are you tonight?
Great, and you?
Okay, so you're here tonight for a daycare in your unit, um, for up to six children, is that correct?
Yeah.
And you're currently occupi-- uh, you're currently conducting a daycare there right now?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. Well, okay, um, how many children do you have in the daycare?
Now, I have five children. I have a baby, five. Let me, let me check. I have a baby who is four months old. I have a toddler who is almost three now. I had two, I have two sisters. One is four, and the other is almost three. I have a boy who is, uh, who goes to school every day, so he's part-time, and, and I also have another toddler who is two. She's, she's two now. So, actually, I have six kids now.
Okay. Do you have any children of your own?
I have two teenagers, actually. I have two daughters. One is 15, and the other one is turning 14, under 27.
Okay, and they live there, too?
Yes, they do.
Okay, and, uh, is this your husband here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and he lives there as well?
Yes, he does.
Okay, all right, okay. And what are your hours of operation?
Uh, I work from 7:00 in the morning to 5:00 p.m.
Monday through Friday?
Monday to Friday, sorry, Monday to Friday.
Okay. And what are the pickup and drop-off times?
Uh, parents usually get there around 7:00. Most of them usually get there around 7:00. Uh, there is a mom who comes with her, uh, her two, her two girls, usually around 8:40, and they come back to pick up their children around 5:00 p.m. every day.
Okay, does everybody pretty much pick up and drop off at the same time?
Yeah, most of them.
Okay, okay. All right, okay. Um, all right, I'm going to go to the board and see if they have any questions right now, unless there's anything else you want to add right at this moment.
Okay.
Okay. Barbara, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
Um, yeah, when I was over there, I, I drove by. Um, it seems like the, the, um, the parking would be tight. Um, you know, with people dropping off and picking up, so how do you manage that?
Actually, two of my, my, uh, kids are, live nearby. They're my neighbors, so they, they just leave their house and come to my house--
They walk there, okay.
So, they don't need a car for that.
Okay.
The one I told you who has two daughters, she lives on the same street, on Civil Avenue, so she goes to my ti-- childcare, walking with her daughters. She doesn't drive, actually. So, I have only two parents who come by car. So, the first one gets there usually around 7:00 in the morning, and she leaves because she has to be at work at 7:00, 7:05, which is really fast. And the second one who goes by car, it's usually a daddy, and he gets there around 8:00, 8:20, so--
Okay, so there's no congestion then?
At this time, my husband has left to work, so I don't have problems with that, actually.
All right, thank you. That was my only question.
Okay, John?
So, um, six children, um, do they get outdoors at all, or do they stay in that unit the whole day?
We, we have a, an area outside, which is fenced, four feet tall, and we usually go outside for an hour when the weather is good. I, I think you have the pictures there.
Well, that, is it just like a deck?
Yeah.
On the deck?
Yeah, on the deck, yeah.
Is the only space?
That's it.
Okay. Okay. I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Jay?
Are you renting this?
Yes.
And do you have, did you talk to the landlord about this?
Yes, I have his permission.
I know it's a tight, tight community. I mean, there's like nine or 10.
Ten units.
Ten units. He owns six of them.
He owns six units.
Yeah, he owns six units.
So it's the gentleman who owns the six units?
Yes.
Alright, and is it, how big is this, how big is the outside area? I saw pictures, but square footage-wise?
It's 75.
I don't remember the exact footage, but...
Maybe I have it here.
Approximately.
I think it's 75 feet for each child. I'm not sure yet.
But we have a little more there.
I'm not sure if I have it here, let me see.
No, no, he wants the total.
Yeah, but I'm checking if I have this with the E.C.
The E.C. regulation.
That's right. In the regulation, they came...
Yeah, in the regulation, they ask, I think, 75 feet per child.
Because the E.C. licenser, she has to go there to check everything. So she has to measure everything, so I'm allowed to work there, you know?
And she came and she looked at the inside and the outside.
Yeah.
So the approved license basically covered all that.
I have everything here.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Dick, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Again, it's, as was just stated, it's a very small place and in a kind of a dangerous location right on 28th. So typically, when we've given relief from these scenarios before, they've been on side roads or at least not, at least not Route 28. The, is it the living room? Is that where all the kids hang in that?
No, actually, I have three places licensed for the daycare. So we have the living room, we have the bathroom, and we have the kitchen. I have this here if you want to take a look at it.
So the two bedrooms are still being used as bedrooms by you?
Yeah.
Alright.
No, they are not allowed to go to the bedrooms, no.
And there's no basement there, I know?
No.
Well, I have, how long you been running it here?
Since September 2023.
So nobody never told you that you needed to get relief?
No.
No.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
According to the E.C. licenser, in my house, inside my house, I would be able to have up to eight kids. But outside, I would have space only for six. So I understand what you're saying, it's a small place, but I could have up to eight kids inside my house.
Well, I think you're limited to six anyways.
I only have six.
Well, I, now, this one, I got some reservations on. And I mean, I'm glad you're doing this business. I know there's a need for it, but this is a tough spot for this kind of business with this many kids and a little, I mean, the whole total square footage, I think on the, on the unit is only about 700 or 800 maybe feet. And that's tight living, tight living and, and having the childcare as well. But I guess that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, you rent that, so you're probably not aware, the rules and regulations of your master deed, okay, prohibit any business use to be conducted on that property. Are you aware of that?
No, actually, when I started having, starting all the process, I had someone to help me, and I was never told about that. So I talked to the owner of the place, to the owner of the house, and he said everything would be okay. And also, the E.C. licenser visits us by surprise to see if everything's okay. I also work for the system for Commonwealth. They always go there, they go there once a month.
Always surprised, is it?
It's always by surprise. They went there last week.
I appreciate what you're saying, ma'am. If I could just interrupt you for one minute, I apologize. But what I'm reading from here is the condominium master deed, and under the rules and regulations of the master deed of the condominium, it's prohibited to have any business uses. So your landlord does not have authority to allow you to run a business at that site.
Well, I got a...
That's the first concern that I have. The other one has been echoed by fellow board members. You know, you only, you've got very limited parking there, and you have to back in and out of CBU Ave. That's a very busy roadway right there, especially in the summertime. And it's really, you've got a lot of people in a small unit. You said you have six children, plus you have your two daughters, and you have you and your husband living there. Now, you're not, obviously, the family's not going to all be there at once, but it's very tight in a very small unit, and you really have no outside area. And the outside area that you do is your deck that is really butting up to the other condominiums in the complex. So I mean, I have real concerns about that location, the size, and the fact that it's a prohibited use in the condominium docks. I wouldn't be able to support something that violates, A, your master deed, and, two, I don't think that you're meeting the criteria of the bylaw, because I think this would rise to the level of an undue nuisance test or congestion. So I would not be able to support that.
I got a violation notice on the 3rd of March. That's when I was told about it. And it says, it has come to the attention of the building department that our daycare...
You don't have to read that, ma'am, I'll read it if you'd like.
And it says, this address is in a B2 zone which allows this use.
It allows the use by way of special permit. You need to come to us for a special permit in order for you to have that use. We have to make a determination that there's no undue hazard nuisance or congestion, and that it won't be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. That's a finding that we have to make.
I see.
Unfortunately, I mean, again, I agree with Mr. Martin that I like your business, I'm glad you're doing that business, but it doesn't work in every single place. And I don't think it works in your place, aside from the fact that you're in violation of your master deed. So I mean, you could change, the homeowners could change that to allow that, but of course, that doesn't mean we're going to allow that, because that whole condominium complex is there by way of variance. There's a long history with that piece of property. But I won't get into that. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, not really.
Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Please come to the microphone.
There's someone coming to the microphone, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Annie Carr, North Road. I don't know this young lady from Adam. I'm here about the lobster guy. But a little conversation I had in the hallway and with some of my fellow people is Yarmouth has got to be kinder. This young mom is trying to make a living. Maybe she and her husband will afford to buy a house in Yarmouth one day, and let's talk about the parents whose children she's taking care of, who live in Yarmouth, who are trying to make a living as well. I don't know if any of you people are at the age where you have to pay childcare, but it's astronomical. And if her landlord is okay with it, and she's following all the rules, she's dotted every i, crossed every t, and you're still going to bust her. So move to Dennis, sweetheart, or move to Hyannis, or move out of Yarmouth, because Yarmouth ain't friendly no more.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Come to the microphone and identify yourself. Seeing, anyone else?
Everybody's in support of this young lady. Give her a nay.
Okay, anybody wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Come to the microphone. Seeing none? Alright, we're gonna close this petition to the public and open it up for board discussion. Dick, I've heard your concerns. Jay, what do you think?
It's a tight location. I know the needs there, et cetera, but this is a bylaw the town voted in place that we're supposed to uphold. So, you know, I'm, I understand, I'm concerned about it. I feel for the residents as well as the operator, but, you know, it is a tough location.
Okay. John?
I'm concerned about the size of the unit. We're looking at spending six children, plus yourself, in a living room, 190 square feet, in the kitchen, which concerns me as well. Kids shouldn't be running around in the kitchen.
Actually, I have five kids during the day because one is a part-time student. So he goes there at 7:00. At 8:40, he goes to school. So by this time...
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, okay? This petition's closed to the public comment, okay? This is board discussion only right now. I'm sorry, you're not allowed to speak anymore. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so that's my biggest concern, is the size of the unit and the amount of children in there. No outside, really outside access at all, other than the small deck. So, in the, the bylaw does, the master deed does say it's for residents only, so that's a concern as well. But other than that, that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Barbara?
No, I agree, I agree with the comments. I'm, you know, I'm concerned with, you know, how small this place is and the parking and, how small the unit is. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I share the same concerns. We certainly support family daycares in town. We've licensed and approved many, many, many of them. In fact, I don't know that we've really ever turned any down. This is a unique situation. It's in a place where it's very busy. There's a lack of parking. There's a lack of space inside. There's a lack of outdoor space. There is potential nuisance to the neighbors. Children could get hurt, and there's no parking for the customers to come and go. It's a very tight spot in that condo complex. And above all that, it's not permitted under the master deed. So for those reasons, I don't think they meet the criteria for special permit. I would ask one of the board members for a motion. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
If you like. Yeah, I guess so. I'm used to that. I would like to just intercede to say that I think there's been at least 20, 25 similar petitions, which we've given relief to in each case. There are a number of cases here, including the violation notice from the building department, from the fact that it's been running illegally for a number of years, the fact that it's tiny and on a busy road, and I just unfortunately have, have issues with giving everybody what they want. There has to be certain controls over what's going on in the town, and that's why we're here. So anyways, I would like to move, I would like to move petition 5170. I actually don't want to do it that way. I, should I try to do that again? Want me to move that in a positive manner or?
Well, you can move it in a positive manner, or you can move it in a negative manner, whichever you prefer.
Okay. Okay, I would move to approve petition 5170 as, don't clap yet, as required, yeah.
Okay.
As specified in the, in the zoning.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Hearing none. All those opposed? Nay.
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 Okay, that's zero in favor, five against. That fails, the special permit is not granted. We have request for variance. Anybody prepared to make a motion on the variance?
I would move that the variance request be, be removed.
Be denied?
It'll be denied, I guess I should say, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? The only discussion I would make is the petitioner failed to present any evidence that they qualified for a criteria under a variance. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Hearing none. All those opposed?
You want to deny it, right? Hang on a second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Dick's motion was to deny.
Denied. Oh, deny, excuse me, I'm sorry. All those in, okay, let's do that again. All those in favor of denying the variance, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimous. The variance is denied as well. Sorry, folks. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Next petition is petition 5171. It is John Frederick Tully, trustee of the John Frederick Tully Living Trust, dated 3/16/15. Property address is 23 Iroquois Boulevard in West Yarmouth. It's in an R25 zoning district. The applicant seeks to overturn the decision of the building commissioner that retail sale of lobsters at this residence is not protected as a pre-existing use or permissible accessory use. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement for a certified site plot plan less than two years old. Good evening. Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
John Tully. Good evening, Jonathan Palloni here, as an attorney representing John Tully. I'm an attorney with Sentine and Associates out of Brewster.
Counsel, I would like to review a few things before we proceed.
Absolutely.
You're here, you're here to overturn the decision of the building inspector because he was violated for a P7 use. Excuse me. Well, hold on here a second. You have a copy of the violation notice, sir?
I don't have a copy in front of me, no.
Okay, that's okay. It's addressed to your client, dated March 7, 2025. Dear Mr. Tully, the building department has been in contact with you, letter dated 8/24/24 regarding the retail sale of lobsters from this address. There is a zoning board of appeals decision 5134, which voted to uphold the decision of the building commissioner and deny the request for a variance. It has come to our attention that lobsters are still being offered for sale at this address. This is a violation of section 202 of the Town of Yarmouth zoning bylaw. The rest of its applications and penalties, it does say here, you are hereby ordered to obey and... to obey and correct said violation and seek relief from the zoning board of appeals as allowed by Mass. General Law 48, section 7 and 15. Counsel, you're aware that we have taken this up last October. There was request for variance at that time, it was a request to overturn the decision of the building commissioner for the same thing, and, uh, we voted on that and denied that petition. Uh, my question to you is, chapter 48, section 16 states that a variance petition cannot be granted within two years of a final unfavorable decision unless there are specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the prior decision was based. Could you please tell me how this is different than the last petition?
Yes, abso, well, um, first of all, thank you for your time here tonight. You can see that John is, uh, well-supported in the community, and, uh, everybody has been here waiting since six o'clock, um, and I appreciate their presence here. To address your question, um, this appeal is substantively different from the appeal that you heard back in October of last year. This is not a variance request. Um, I appreciate that the board weighed the merits of a variance request and declined to grant a variance at that time. But after reviewing the video of that hearing, it seemed clear to me, um, and this was the purpose of my conversations with the building commissioner, um, how do we address this question of, uh, this being a protected use? Because that was not a question that really was presented to the board back in October. Um, John was self-representing, he was trying to figure this out on his own through conversations with the building commissioner and, and the conversation that he had with you all in the October hearing. So, in an effort to really finalize and complete the record, um, I proposed to the building commissioner that he issue a new enforcement order and that we be able to bring this back to you so that you could address the question of whether this is a protected use, uh, given the historical use at this property going back to the 50s when John's father purchased the property.
Well, counsel, if I could stop you there for a minute, please?
Yep.
Uh, the last time he was here, he was cited for retail sale of lobsters.
Correct.
It was brought to our attention that this was a grandfathered use, okay? That he said it was. We upheld the decision of the building commissioner at the last hearing, and we also denied a variance. So, I'm just, I need you to tell me materially what is different, because, and...
I can do that.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but I, this seems to me to be the exact same petition as we just heard back in October, and it was not timely appealed.
Respectfully, it's, it's not the same petition because grandfathering wasn't addressed. The, the one issue on grandfathering that you, I believe, raised, uh, Mr. Chairman, was about the, uh, lobster pots that are kept on the property. And so there was a distinguishing between the structures and the mater, the storage of materials on the property, that, that wasn't even discussed, that was just a statement that, that was grandfathered. That wasn't a statement made by John, that was a, a statement that came from the board. John's position was that the, the building commissioner's decision should be overturned on the basis of a variance request, that because the board, he was asking the board to grant him a variance, and that therefore that would overrule the decision of the building commissioner. What was not in front of the board...
Well, I've got the, do you have the, do you have the last decision in front of you?
I do not.
You do not? Would you like us to make a copy for you?
Um, I mean, I, I have it on my phone, I mean, if you would, would like me to pull it up and read it.
Well, we're, we're gonna go over it. Can we get this gentleman a copy of the last decision?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Palloni, there's a copy right here. Got the decision?
Okay, the decision is the...
This is the minutes that I have.
Decision, please.
I, I, I think I understand where you're going with this, which is that...
Well, before, well, you, just, just hear me out here, because we're not sure we're gonna allow you to proceed. That's the reason I'm brazening. Okay? No, please, I don't wanna have to clear the room, okay, folks? Just be with us, please. Well, I'll go over with...
Everyone will get your turn. We might be here till 10, 10:30 or 12.
Okay. The decision is that the board agreed the petitioner does not meet the criteria for a variance, okay? So that was denied. We also upheld the decision of the building commissioner.
May I?
That is in violation of selling lobsters at his residence.
Yes.
So you're coming in here tonight and saying, "Oh, no, that's not what you're here for." Well, that's what the, the violation notice is. You're coming in here and trying to propose that, "Well, that's wrong because it's a grandfathered use."
Correct.
Our position is this, we've already heard this, so it wasn't timely filed. Now, I'm gonna suggest to the board that we don't hear this because it's not, it's a repetitive petition. If we vote against that, you certainly can appeal that decision to the Superior Court and ask for an order of remand if you believe that we were incorrect. Would you agree with that?
Well, I absolutely would do that, but I think that you're incorrect in deciding that you don't have the ability to hear this. There's no restriction on the number of enforcement orders...
Well, that's our, that's our decision, right?
Well, but if I can just explain...
Go ahead.
The, the decision that you were just referring to specifies that you upheld the determination of the building commissioner that the abuse that John was doing, selling fish in, that it was not a B4 use. I mean, you, you specifically said, "This is not a B4 use, we are saying that it's an H3 use." That was the decision that you upheld of the building commissioner. What I am saying is now we have completed the record. John did not submit any of the zoning bylaws going back to 1958, the language of the zoning bylaw in 1958, or in 1982 when the zoning bylaw changed. You had none of the facts before you that would have allowed you to make a decision about whether it was a protected use or not. That was simply not covered by the decision in any respect or form. The second...
You're right. Go ahead.
The, the second piece, which is also, wasn't raised, and it wasn't raised by John because he didn't have counsel, the second half of my argument is that this is actually an allowed accessory use in the residential district at Q3, which was also never discussed. So, that, that, that's the opportunity that we're asking, is to discuss those two issues with the board. We feel like we've completed the record. Um, I did public records requests so that all the zoning bylaws...
Well, first of all, you're not even asking for, for these, these use areas. I, your, your application is pretty vague. Your application here just says reverse the decision of the building commissioner. That's all you're asking for. Then you go on and you add facts that you believe are facts that are true.
I, I'm sure...
That's what you're doing here.
I, I don't, I don't...
I think you've got a defective application. If that's what you're doing.
I, I submitted a narrative along with the application, it was a letter of my le...
But you're asking to, but wait, you've only asked to reverse the decision of the building inspector. That's based upon his violation notice. His violation notice is essentially the same violation notice that was sent out prior to the October 24 hearing.
That's, that's correct. There is no limit on the number of violation notices that can be issued.
Excuse me, excuse me, counsel, I'll give you a minute. We heard that. We upheld his decision, and we denied a variance. We heard testimony. So, in my opinion, and I'm gonna go to the board in a minute and see if they're in agreement with me, this is a repetitive petition that cannot be heard for two years from that day. Now, if you disagree with that, if the board agrees with that, you get a, a vote that you can't proceed tonight, and if you take it over to the Superior Court and they order a remand, then we'll hear it. Otherwise, I don't think we can hear this for two years. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the board right now. I wanna go to the board and, uh, get their opinion on this matter. Um, you've heard my position here. Is anyone in disagreement with that position?
We are.
Dick? Come on, folks, quiet here, we're holding a meeting. Mr. Martin? Dolores, can you hear me?
All right, calm down.
We can't hear you, Mr. Chairman, but we'd like the crowds to please be quiet.
Please let us continue, you're interrupting the process.
All right, Dick, you heard my position, do you agree or disagree with my position?
I would agree with you, Sean.
Jay, do you agree or disagree with my position?
I agree with you.
John?
I agree.
Barbara?
I think your analysis could guess I agree with you, Sean.
Okay, so the board is in agreement that this is a repetitive petition. Do I have a motion to deny the petitioner from going forward because this is a repetitive petition? Do I have a motion? Uh, excuse me, Dolores?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're, we're, we're cutting off public comment, we're going to the board right now. Is anybody prepared to make a motion to deny the petition based upon it being a repetitive petition? Uh, I'm sorry, Dolores, can the board not hear me?
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but it's very loud in the room and it's difficult to hear...
Okay, do we have a, do we have any police in the room? Do we have any police here?
This was, this was brought to us as a, as a complaint, which was then acted on by the...
Hold on, Dick, hold on, Dick.
Yeah, I just...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, no more, no more discussion here.
Well, actually, that's...
Okay, the board is suspending discussion on this, okay? Do we have any police in the room, uh, Dolores?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman, but...
Pardon me?
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, I can get someone, and...
Why don't you send somebody down, we're gonna clear the room.
All right.
Counsel, where are you going? They're not leaving. Counsel? Counsel? Can anybody hear me, by the way, Dolores?
No.
Okay, all right. I, I, I would like Counsel, Counsel and Mr. Tully at the table, please.
They're there.
They are there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I need everybody else in the room quiet, please. All right, we're going back to the board now. Can the board hear me? Yes or no?
No, I can't.
Okay, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I think we can keep them quiet, Mr. Chairman, we can actually hear everyone. On the board.
On the board. Is anybody prepared to make a motion to deny the petition based upon it being a repetitive petition that's less than two years old?
So moved.
We got a motion made by Jay. Anybody prepared to second the motion?
Uh, John seconded, sir.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, that I'll just, will incorporate into the motion my comments. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Do I have ayes from everybody?
Yes.
Okay, wake up, board, come on here. Do I have an aye from everybody?
We all said aye.
Okay, any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. The petition's denied. Counsel, counsel? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, back to counsel, please. Counsel, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, obviously you're upset, unhappy about this, I would suggest that you take this over to the Superior Court and, uh, appeal our decision and see if they'll give you an order for remand.
Will do.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good night now.
That, that's a, that's a good way to go.
Right way to go.
Don't pay property tax.
How about if we don't pay property tax?
We want a petition of special town meeting.
We don't pay our property taxes.
We will be back.
Hey, Dolores?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't you, uh, why don't you call up the police department and ask them to come down and, uh, take a ride through the parking lot? Come down, see if they can give some help, clearing out the room.
Um, they're, they're, they're outside the doors, Mr. Chairman, hang on.
Okay, good, I think you just assist everybody and, and leave, and that'd be great.
No, you can't... No, they actually, that's not how it works, sir.
We can't do that, they all voted on this, these bylaws.
Okay, 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 Dolores, ask the police to get in the room and remove these two people.
If we could ask people to clear the room, there is still a meeting going on.
If I have a choice of who to help, I'd probably help John Tully than help anybody else.
Folks, you can clear the room because we still have a meeting going on.
Not the last item on the agenda.
Dolores?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Dolores, can you hear me? I need the police to clear this room here.
They are here, Mr. Chairman.
These people should not be walking up to the board.
If we could just have people clear the room, step away from the board.
Safely to our car.
We do have other items on the agenda. Yeah, we need people out, out now. Still have one more item on the agenda when we can get to it. Hang on a second.
John, is John still here?
I'm still here.
Yes, he is. Mr. Chairman, we're working on it.
That's okay. That's okay.
The last piece of business is we have minutes from March 27.
Wait. We're waiting until the room is cleared.
Folks, there's other items on the agenda, so if you could please clear the room.
He was there, so everything is...
Okay, good, so... Because next week I'll have some time, so...
Did I bring it up now? Is it okay to bring it up now?
Yes, the room has been cleared, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have minutes?
We have minutes from March 27, and I'd make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Do we have any more minutes?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else? I guess we will stand adjourned. I would suggest that everybody take the... They're all mad at me, so don't worry about that, so...
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all right. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.